What is going on beautiful people? Welcome back to the eight one seven podcast where we talk about the lovely city of Fort Worth, Texas. We give you three short stories, one big story, wins and losses for the city of Fort Worth, Tarrant County and possibly Texas as a whole. We do this every week and we drop Monday for busy Fort Worthians who are out trying to make a difference, stay informed and make better decisions. I'm with my co-host Anne Zeta. How goes it today?
It goes pretty well. I'm finally over the trauma of driving in rush hour traffic to get here today. We normally record on Sundays, so it's a lot calmer out there on the roads to get here. And this morning I was out there with all of the people going to work.
You're 100% right. My wife dropped me off and it was eight AM and she was just like, you know, cursing the whole time like, what the heck is going on out here? So she gets to take backroads all the way to stop six to work. So she had to get on the highway to get me here. So we felt it too.
Well, yeah, I avoid highways, even if it is the most direct route. I'll always like look at the GPS and see what the time difference is and the aggravation factors in, and then I almost always take surface streets.
Yeah. And speaking of streets, you're also like the queen of open streets. I saw like you're on like a picture and all that. So I don't yet know.
I know it's like I'm already there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Some of the publicity that they put out, I just stumbled across that myself. So I shared it and encouraged everybody to go to open streets. That's the day that we, some people refer to it as closing the streets to cars, but I like to say, and they like to say it's opening the streets to people.
Oh, come on now. And I know this is going to be too late for anyone who listens to this, but hopefully you were there and it would be a good time.
Talking about things on us on before they happen, but recording before we drop on Monday.
We're recording Friday. We usually record Sunday. Open Streets is on Saturday. You're listening on Monday. So let's go ahead and dive into our three short stories. First story, oh, before I go there, the big story is an interview with Roderick Miles. He is running for county commissioner precinct one. Uh, that's going to be exciting. We had, uh, the other, uh, challenger Kathleen Hicks, who was also, uh, we had an interview, uh, two or three weeks ago. Everyone really loved the Bud Kennedy one as well. So we just keep rolling these interviews, but I'm really excited to hear, uh, Mr. Miles's work and his history in Fort Worth and how he sees him as the best candidate for the role. But we're going to start short story one, talking about the county. Um, first we're going to talk about Tarrant County judge defends role in appraisal board race. So if you remember, we had Lee Henderson on who is running for place three on this board. And we talked about the importance of having a Fort Worthian actually represented on a board, uh, for the Tarrant County appraisal district. But this is all about how Tim O'Hare and Lee also talked about this, uh, when he was our guest is really involved in this race. And even Republican, uh, candidates in this race that are not endorsed by O'Hare are calling out that this is crossing ethical lines. Uh, Chuck Kelly, a Colleyville city council member is running for place three, one of these three open seats on the board. And Kelly said county Tim O'Hare told him not to run a few minutes after he left O'Hare's office to file his application for the race.
I mean, I, that right there jumped out at me because having been involved in running for office, I was, I have been told by numerous people that you never tell somebody not to run. I mean, that's just like the last thing that you should do, even when somebody comes to you and tells you that they might file to run against you. And with all of your instincts, you probably want to discourage them from doing so. That rarely works. And in this case, it obviously didn't. This person is moving forward with their, their candidacy. But everybody has the right to run and I don't think that anybody should tell anybody not to run for office.
Yeah. The quote from Chuck Kelly said that Tim calls me on my way home and says, I'm calling you as a friend, unquote. Later in the story, he talks about how he's never hung out with O'Hare, never had a drink with O'Hare. So you know, this is a classic politic line, but then he said that he recalled the conversation in January, quote, I just want you to know that as a friend, I found this guy and you don't want to run against him. And so to me, what's interesting about it, it's not just like, I think I'm okay if like, if someone came up to me and be like, hey, I, as a friend or person who, who generally is like, cares about you, like looking at the race, looking at the odds, at least you're aware of your odds. I feel like sometimes, you know, good friends are people who tell you your chance, but to me what this is, is bully ball. Like I found this other guy and you don't want to run against them. That is bullying to me.
Yeah. And also, I mean, the, the, just the optics of the fact that you have to file your applications to run with Tim O'Hare's office. And so him being involved in saying anything to anybody who's filing, when it's his office that that filing goes through is just bad optics. Even if he doesn't have the ability to, to influence or whoever ends up being on the board is not necessarily influenced by him, which I think that's not really very accurate either.
Yeah, it's, if, if you're having to file in front of this guy, then he's able to go endorse and pit his own campaign dollars behind people. You may not, uh, run it, but you influence it mightily, right? And so the Tarrant appraisal district is responsible for the election and has contracted with the county election administrator to handle the election. Uh, this is what Tim O'Hare told Star Telegram in a statement. That also sounds like you kind of are running it by contract with TAD. But I'm just glad he responded to a request to be in a paper, uh, the article. So usually these articles, he doesn't respond at all. So at least he's.
I think there was, he, he did decline to, to respond to one part of it, I think. And then, um, said, but then said that he is endorsing people and acknowledged his endorsements. Cause it says, O'Hare did not respond to a questions asking whether he called Kelly after he filed, but acknowledged his endorsements.
Susan Hayes in Austin and Alpine base attorney who works in political law said, O'Hare in his role as the filing authority should not be weighing in on the candidates. The county judge has the power to accept or reject applications for the ballot. Ethically, gatekeepers should not be picking sides. That's for the voters to decide. So, um, again, this person has done all these ways to use their power to gain more power, to take control. We have a list of things over the last six months, we've talked about on little things that we feel like he's tried to do. But thankfully there's also people like Lon Burnham, uh, where the Tarrant Dem Party on Instagram today. I mean, I woke up to this and then I sent it to Anne or was, or it could have been last night.
It was last night.
Uh, it all runs together. And so the video shows Commissioner Manny Ramirez being, um, trying to get, uh, a, a contract passed for $12,000. And the people who would pay for it is Tarrant County taxpayers, uh, for professional services contracts. But Lon, uh, Burnham, who is an experienced, uh, Texas politician, who has a lot of history involved in tracking, uh, legislation. And he just kind of goes in and talks about, uh, how one, um, this contract is with a group called Guardian, Guardian Public Strategies, um, which basically is a full service political campaign and consulting group. And it is only has one person on, on staff and that one staff person is Randall Meadows. And basically Lon Burnham comes out and talks about that this person was the former president of the Arlington Police Association and does a lot of connections to the Fort Worth Police Association and candidates. And so he just called out and said, this sounds like something that Ramirez should be paying out of his own campaign dollars. And it ended with, um, Commissioner Fickers not being there. So it went to two to two, uh, a party line tie and didn't pass through. But I just think this was something interesting to bring up because Bud Kenny talked about cronyism and fraud in the county. And then this viral video shows up. What is your take as someone who also kind of knows of Lon and then also just?
Yeah. I mean, Lon and I have crossed paths over the years. He lived in district, he lives in district nine. So we, um, I was his council member when I served. Um, interesting fact, he's a Quaker and I was raised by Quakers. But he, uh, is definitely someone who's keeping an eye on things at the county level. And he, in his, uh, the little spiel that was on Instagram, he clearly did his research on the item. And he pointed out that while this wasn't a large dollar amount, that it just seemed like a, a type of service that should be paid for or, um, come from campaign dollars, not from county taxpayer dollars. So I'm not sure even what the contract was that they were going to be doing. If looking at the website, it appears that almost all of the work that they do, all of their, um, shout outs and, um, reviews are from, uh, officers associations, both on the police and fire side. Um, and that's my knowledge of, of the work that is done, um, through that company as well. So it just seemed like Lon did his homework and went in and asked some questions during public comment on an item and was successful because one commissioner wasn't there. So I'm not sure what it would have happened if Commissioner Fickers had been there.
And it sounds like Mr. Fickers hasn't been there for a couple of times, leading to this party line tie.
Yeah. I don't, he's not running again for his seat. Um, but he's still the person in that seat. Or maybe should be. I'm not sure where he's at.
Yeah. But, but maybe he's, you know, feeling like there's a lot of stuff happening and not, you know, maybe he's just like, I can't, you know, this is too sticky. But, um, we're going to play the audio for you because I also think it was a masterclass on how to do this and talk, uh, to your party, uh, to your officials.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, while this proposal on the face of it looks relatively innocuous, it's not. I am pretty familiar with legislative history. And, um, my first job in the legislature, the representative had to let me go, um, because he discovered his chief of staff was squirreling away office supply for his own private use. Now that's not as bad as squirreling away state stamps to buy your pickup, but that has happened in the past without the proper mechanisms to protect against this. I'm really concerned about this proposal, not because of the dollar amount, but because of what it represents for the future. You see, I did a little research on the Guardian website. Guardian only has one employee, Randall Meadows. I've never met Mr. Meadows. I don't know Mr. Meadows, but I do know that he was the president of the Police Officers Association in Arlington, Texas, and he is the only employee, uh, of Guardian. I looked further at the Guardian website and found out that all they do is electoral work. Now I've done a lot of electoral work in my time, but I've always been either paid for or paid for it being done on my behalf out of political dollars, not public sector dollars. If you look more closely at this guarding website, you recognize that the only thing they do is electoral politics. I've got a graduate degree in city regional planning. I know a little bit about analyzing statistics and how to do appropriate research to prepare to do something. The Guardian website does not have this experience in its one employee. So I'm here to suggest that maybe there is a conflict of interest by the proposer for this project and the $10,000. I'm not saying I know anything conclusively. I just look at the websites and I just look at relationships and I think this $12,000 should come out of Commissioner Ramirez's political account, not public sector dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion to second on this item. Any discussion?
Yeah. Lon does a great job. He, he speaks very, very well in public. And you know, interesting thing, I went to a birthday party last night for three years that the Fort Worth report has been in existence. And one of the things that I'm not going to remember the exact title of what they're going to call this, but, um, the editor was saying that they are going to start training and hiring just regular citizens to go to public meetings and report back on kind of what's happening in those public meetings. I whispered to the person next to me, I do that right now. Maybe I should be getting paid for this.
Exactly. Civic journalism right there.
But that's exactly what they're planning to do is to have some citizen journalism, people who kind of keep tabs on things. And that way you don't have to have quite as many reporters going and doing that. And as Bud Kennedy pointed out in his interview, you know, we've dwindled down in the past, there's been competition amongst publications because there's been multiple reporters in the room at these various meetings.
That's a brilliant idea.
Yeah, I think so too.
Cool. Well, let's go ahead and dive into short story number two. Short story number two is, uh, a couple of stories about events that happened in downtown with one of those actually being downtown Inc.'s, State of Downtown event. And Anne, I know you went to this event, so I'm going to let you kind of lead this story.
Yeah. So, uh, Fort Worth Downtown Fort Worth Inc., um, had their annual meeting, which included both business and, um, a, a report and a, um, presentation by, um, uh, a gentleman that heads up an organization that kind of supports downtown organizations and downtown revitalization. So that was speaking my language. There were several slides on the screen quoting Jane Jacobs. And so as a city planner, I was in my element. It was lovely. But they basically, in this article from the Star Telegram, the Fort Worth Downtown continues its recovery in the face of post pandemic curveballs. They say we're chugging along despite economic headwinds from rising interest rates and national real estate trends. The findings of the 2023 State of Downtown report was, were released and neighborhood advocacy group downtown, um, Fort Worth Inc. gave kind of an update on where things are, that downtown is still seeing a 3% increase in office occupancy in 2023. Some of that they say may be due to converting those, some of those buildings into residential buildings. But the, and that also that Fort Worth took over some office space so that the overall numbers of square footage of office space on the market have come down because of that, um, purchase. But downtown Fort Worth has the highest office rent increases in Texas in 2023 with 11% and second nationally to Atlanta, Georgia, according to the report. And people downtown are making more money than before COVID-19 pandemic with an average employee salary up by 19% in 2023 compared to 2019. Hotel rates have increased beyond pandemic levels and there are 1,400 new hotels in the pipeline. So downtown Fort Worth Inc., uh, President Andy Taft took time to address the fact that there was that explosion in the Sandman Hotel and praised the first responders and folks who are doing that, but also encouraged folks to support businesses that were affected by the blast because that hotel is being reconstructed and repaired. And some of that construction has barricades, making it difficult to see some of the adjacent businesses. And so they have a, a program right now that if you go and, uh, frequent some of those businesses, they've got like t-shirts that show your support for downtown businesses. And the general manager of the Sandman was in the audience as well at the luncheon. And so he was complimenting her and they basically said that there's been increases. He also touched on the fact that Texas A&amp;M's campus, kind of where that's at. There's long range plans for improvements for Heritage Park and Paddock Park, which I'm super excited about. Um, I think they're getting very close to their fundraising goals on that. And there, the renderings of what that park is going to look like and the connection that it's going to have to the river is just really incredible. So I think it was all around it, a positive, um, report from downtown Fort Worth Inc.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think to me it's, it's, I, I always, my always feeling of these events is, is it a really event if we never talk about what we're concerned about though? You know, like what is, and that's my always called action to anyone who runs a end of the year summit pow wow about Fort Worth. If all we are doing is gassing each other up, you know, what can I do? You know, that's why I don't, I don't go to events a lot because it's like, I don't feel like I, if, if we're not talking about the hard things and we need to collaborate about how do we fix them? I feel like that's when you get the great people in the room to do that.
Yeah, they did touch on some of the, of the, um, struggles that happen in an urban core environment. They touched on homelessness and, um, the, the ambassador program. They did, of course, tout the wins on that. They shared that there's one of the ambassadors who does homeless outreach and he has actually been successful in find, finding housing for 23 individuals who were formerly homeless on the streets of downtown. So I like to be a positive person and, and have a solution as well as talking about the problem. I don't think that we have fixed homelessness in downtown. There is obviously still homelessness in downtown, but I think that, um, they, that, that event is to talk about positive things. So.
Cool. Well, the other event that was also to talk about, um, positive things was how Fort Worth mayor and state leaders pushed for a better early education policies. Uh, this was with Fort Worth Mayor Matty Parker, Education Commissioner Mike Marath and Texas Workforce Commissioner Chairman Brian Daniel. Uh, they were having on April 11th, a conversation with Momentum Early Learning Summit, an invitation only statewide conference hosted during off years of legislature. They were basically talking about how some policies are broken, but that doesn't, doesn't mean the entire system is. Delivering pre-K through a variety of early education setting, including public schools, community-based child programs and Head Start, building a pipeline of early educators who can chart a career path, earning credentials and degrees and good wages along the way. Really they kind of talked about how based off of the article, let me say, it, it, it gave as if they were giving the situation here is that there's a lot of private childcare systems. But now that Fort Worth ISD and other districts have moved down to third, uh, three years old, uh, that now it's impacting those businesses because the funding, but at the same time, these districts don't have the capacity to run these institutions. So we need to create better partnerships between these private entities and the district to work together. And, and I agree there. I think that makes a lot of sense. We do that a lot in, you know, our, our world of software, right? You go out to use outside groups for out of school tutoring for kids. So there's a lot of partnerships that way. But I think the big kicker to me is they talked about wages and how, um, one of the panelists said how you can make more at Buc-E's, uh, working as, uh, doing checkout. And so I, I think the, the childcare part of, 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 of that, and then how do you get more credentialed people who have backgrounds in early childhood education? This is where I just think like, it almost kind of reminds me or feels what Bud Kennedy talked about with reporters and media. It's just like, how do you set up something that isn't necessarily supposed to be a capitalistic cash cow, but it's really important to the economic stability of our future so that we can continue to create great companies and create great jobs if we create more edge, you know, supported, loved, compassionate young kids to have their brain developed properly so we can achieve these high profiteering things that we care about in downtown. So I just don't know how you solve this without being more pro childcare funding, either at the state level, the federal level, investing as a community to build up this capacity. And, and I'm not sure they really said that, um, being that these were state can't officials. I also believe everyone on this panel were Caucasian white individuals. And the majority of our kids under five in at least Fort Worth, maybe I can go along and say Texas is Hispanic. So you're also just like, I don't know, the dynamic of that creating, uh, policies without maybe fully understanding stories. I still think that's a big gap. I mean, anytime I see an event or go to an event, we're still missing a lot of, uh, Latino representation, um, in our civic engagement and our conversations. Um, but also, um, we probably need to be having stuff like this in dual language. And we need to be doing that more, especially if we're talking to families of the future.
Yeah. I think, I mean, we talked a little bit about childcare associates and the work that they're doing. And I think that capacity building and making sure that that early childhood education is robust and not just, you know, babysitting or putting kids in front of TVs, but credentialing people going down into those smaller daycare facilities and making sure that they have, building their capacity to do that higher level, um, childcare that you were just describing and is so necessary to make sure that the kids can then be successful. Because that leads into the whole, you know, kids reading at third grade level, which there was another article about that in the Fort Worth report, talking about most Tarrant County students aren't at grade level. And there's a new campaign that wants to change that. And, you know, part of the campaign is putting up billboards to try to inform parents that just because your kid is getting an A or a B on their report card, doesn't necessarily meaning that they're at grade level. But a lot of parents don't know to ask that question. They're like, oh, they're getting As and Bs. They're fine. But if you drill down in, you might see that they're not hitting those, those grade level attainment. And they just pass on to the next grade, pass on to the next grade and then are not. So all this work that's happening at the early childhood leads into better success as they get into school age. Um, and so it seems like a lot of this work is being put on the private sector and nonprofit, nonprofit sector, not so much the private sector, but nonprofit sector. Which then I think that leads to what you're saying, that it shouldn't be this big money-making thing. It's like for the, the good of all of the people, which is the good of all of us. But if it has to be a money-making endeavor.
Yeah. And, and it's just, you know, and the other, sorry, the other panelist on there, I just want to make sure to give credit. Childcare Associate CEO Carol Waddell was also on the panel. Um, but the, um, yeah, I mean, the kicker to me is like, I don't know how this works because also as a business owner, I cannot do that myself, but as we get bigger, how do you provide childcare to your employees? How do we provide universal childcare? How do you provide the things? Because if, if kids are getting taken care of, more people can go out and focus on, you know, being economically productive, which we, which is important. But it also, if we create a world-class, uh, version of this, uh, we are able to create better people for us in the future. And I, I was at the Georgia superintendent conference for work, this last week and, and a superintendent said to me, you know, what makes America different than other countries? Education is completely funded at the federal level. Completely funded at the federal level. So like, there's just a lot of things around here. So, another stat that I thought that said only 15% of eligible three-year-olds and 30% of four-year-olds enroll in pre-K according to childcare associates, um, which is what, where Carol Waddell, Waddell is the CEO at.
Yeah. So, but we'll include in the show notes, also this other article about early child, I mean, about, uh, grade level. Because there are a bunch of opportunities listed here where folks can go and find out about these resources that are available. So we're all about providing information that help people, uh, be engaged and support their kids and have all these better outcomes. But there, and what you said about, you know, we're not reaching all the people and sometimes people that, that you're trying to serve aren't in the room. I think that they are trying to reach out in ways that reach more people instead of having a public meeting in a governmental building and asking everybody to come to that meeting. This list of going to bond beyond the grade events are happening in churches, in, um, inner community agencies, at schools, in community centers and all kinds of places. So it seems like a way to, to get the information out to more people.
And, um, the, the same issue we're having with grades with kids being on reading level is why a lot of people are really big on keeping standardized testing for colleges because because grades can be so subjective and you can have a 4.0 kid, the test score on an SAT or ACT allows to see if you can handle the coursework and if you, anything that shows you will perform well in college is that ACT SAT. Now, as someone who did poorly on that, you know, and there's people who have different opinions about that, but there's also that dynamic as well. So you're seeing this kind of conversation between the grade and I guess reality being, um, being a, a conversation happening in Texas. So we're going to move to short story three. This is all you Anne. And then we're going to dive into the big story with Roderick Miles.
So yeah, there was a Fort Worth report article titled, what development do you want to see in Fort Worth? City seeks your voice. I think we've touched on this a couple of times, the fact that the city of Fort Worth is doing a update to the comprehensive plan, which has not been done in its totality, um, for the entire thing in over three decades, literally like the last 30 years, we have not updated this plan. So they've done tweaks, they've done sections at a time. They look at it every year, but this is the first time they've kind of done a full re-envisioning of the Fort Worth comprehensive plan. And this article provides every bit of information that you could possibly need about how they're going to go about this. They're doing a very robust, uh, engagement piece on this. And they are advertising in this article, help Fort Worth plan, uh, or help plan Fort Worth meetings at community centers, schools and at city hall. And the first one was held on April 11th last night, which I was not able to attend, but I saw some folks sharing some photographs online. And it looks very interactive. It looks like they have, um, activities for people of all ages. They have like putting colored stickers on various pictures to indicate types of things you would like to see and things you would not like to see. Um, and these workshops are going to be being held through April and May, um, coming to a conclusion on May 20. Um, coming to a conclusion on May 21st with a vision summit, which the location and time of that is yet to be determined. But they're designed to, um, to be different than your typical public meetings where staff give a presentation and then residents stand up to the microphone and give their input. Because not everybody feels comfortable standing up and giving input in that way. So I, I was really impressed with all the different ways in which people can participate in this. They've got an online element as well, where people can submit their comments that way.
Is that something we can pin in the show notes?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and I think I, I would love like, and I'm not saying we would get a lot of people to roll out because we're still a small little pod of a bunch of cool people who really want to nerd out about this stuff with us every week. But I would, I mean, it'd be cool if we would have done an event, you know, to strategize and talk with listeners about what they wanted to see, you know? If we, if you and I had time.
Or the pod?
Uh, for the city, that'd be cool. I mean, and.
Don't we do that every week, EJ? I think we do that every week.
I know, I know. Um, uh, but it'd be cool to have, I always thought it'd be, I mean, I, I think we need to make it happen eventually, but an in-person pod where, where we have people come and hear us out.
Yeah, that would be great. I would love that. But all the meetings are listed here. We've been sharing it at, um, Community Design Fort Worth on all of our social media, um, to try to encourage folks to get out. Um, I was asking for all of this material to be available in both English and Spanish. And the first material that I was sent basically had a cover page that was in Spanish. And I, you know, was questioning whether or not that was going to get people where they needed to go. Because when you click on the link, it takes you to the city's website and everything's in English unless you know where to go to change the language. Um, so I got specific links already translated to Spanish so that I could put those links into all of the material that we sent out so that, and, and then gave the instructions on what to click, click on in Spanish as well, so that people are not having to look for translation to get that. So I think that, that they're headed in a good direction. I think they may be having an event out at open streets. They might have some city staff out there. So I think that's one of the things they're doing as well as going out into the community at events that people are already at that are not necessarily totally focused on this effort, um, to just get input at every opportunity that they possibly can. So I think this is a good thing.
Well, let's get ready for the big story, um, and hear out our guest, Roderick Miles Jr. He's a true son of Fort Worth and a, and precinct one. Shaped by the values of his community, he proudly graduated from O D Wyatt High School, where he began a journey marked by unwavering dedication. His educational path led him to Tarrant County College, South Campus, before finding his academic home at Philander Smith College in Little Rock, Arkansas, where he earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree in psychology. Um, he then, uh, embarked on a path toward a Masters of Divinity at St. Paul School of Theology in Kansas, Missouri. Roderick's story is not defined by his degrees alone. It's a narrative of heart and passion for service and has left an undeniable mark on the communities he's touched. Today, he's an executive administrator for programs and outreach at the Office of County Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks, Precinct One. And he is running for that office in this upcoming election, which is May 28th. So here is Roderick Miles.
Good morning. My name is Roderick Miles and my Fort Worth story is a kid that was born in Highland Hills, Texas. Grew up there. Then my parents moved to Forest Hill. And that's kind of really where I grew up and developed my roots. And I remember spending as a young boy, spending the weekdays, my dad taking me to my grandparents' house for my grandmother and my cousins to watch me when I was a little boy. I vividly remember him picking me up out of the bed, putting me in the backseat of the car. And that's probably a blasphemous statement because there was no car seat, none of that. He just laid me in the, the backseat of the car.
Ann's about to pass out.
I know, right?
I was raised that way too. We're all of a certain age here. I think, especially if you're in the backseat. I think we had a choice of using a seatbelt on the rural country roads that we grew up.
Look how like mature our, our species has come. Look at that.
I know, right? So he would drive me to stop six. My grandparents stayed, uh, stayed on Edgewood Terrace. 1908 Edgewood Terrace, and he dropped me off there and carried me in the house. And my grandmother would have breakfast waiting and my cousins would be there. And my grandfather, who was a realtor, uh, I used to always love to ride with him and say, Bill, we called him Bill, Bill, can I go with you? Can I go with you today? And he was like, come on grandson. And so I get in his Lincoln Continental. And we would drive around the south side and all over Fort Worth, and he would go to collect rent. And so we would drive from house to house. He'd pick up rent and when people didn't have the money to pay for the rent, he would say, don't worry about it. I'll take care of it. You're good. And then we would go to restaurants like, uh, Drew's Cafeteria or Drake's. And he would go in and get some lunch and then we'd get back in the car and drive. And I would always say to him, Bill, I sure am hungry. He would say, I would say, I'm tarving because I couldn't say starving. I'm tarving, I'm tarving. He was like, what you want grandson? I would say H and J hamburger. He would take me to H and J's. And I'd get a hamburger and then he'd bring me back to the house and my Aunt Erlene would be there. And she'd say nephew, and she would play with me. And I want to say my love for community service and, and work like that, I learned from my grandparents. Because my grandparents had a grocery store on Evans Avenue. Uh, one of the first African-American grocery stores on Evans Avenue, and it started in their house. People would come by the house because the way that the house was configured, they had this brick room in the front that they converted into like an office space, right? And so people would come over and say, hey, I need this. Can I borrow this and da, 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 da? And they'd be like, sure. And they started doing business out of the house.
They were doing mixed use before mixed use was a thing.
Before it was a thing, right? And so they would do business in, outside of the house and then they grew and started the grocery store. And I have a picture that is on my Facebook page of my grandparents sitting in front of their grocery store on Evans Avenue. Where the N double A C P building is, that was my grandparents' grocery store. And so I remember their grocery store, then my grandfather really got into real estate and my grandmother, Mama Henry, she had, um, a notary service that she would do out of the house. And so she would notarize documents for residents and neighbors in the community and stuff like that. And then I remember growing up and my Aunt Erlene was really involved in politics. Uh, she helped a lot of people get elected to office, um, Burgess, she helped, she worked on his campaign. She worked on Frank Moss's campaign and a host of other people. And I remember, uh, riding in the car with her and she had this huge speaker. Like on the top of her car, I don't know how she did it. She had it like.
Bungee cords or something.
Whatever, right? And so we, me and my brother, we would ride with her in the neighborhood because she was running for Justice of the Peace, Precinct Eight. And so we would ride through the neighborhood and she would like, vote for Erlene Miles for JP, Precinct Eight. And we thought it was just a cool thing to be able to be on that horn, right? Vote for Erlene Miles for JP, uh, Precinct Eight. And so we would drive through the neighborhood and stuff like that. And she really introduced me to the political scene because that was what she did. She was very passionate about it. She was a fierce advocate, uh, for women's rights and things of that nature. So that's kind of my story. And then my dad was a pastor in Fort Worth. He, he took over the real estate business first, and then he left real estate and went into ministry and was pastoring in Fort Worth. And my Uncle Howard was a long-term teacher at I Am Terrill and at Polytechnic High School. And coached the girls' track team and won those state titles at Poly. And so my roots run extremely deep in Fort Worth. That's kind of, that's my story.
Yeah. What, so what are some like core values or the way your grandparents and the community moved in? And, and how has that instilled in you today when you look at the, you know, those communities today and where Fort Worth and Tarrant County needs to go in the future?
So community service or services of family value for the Miles family. That's kind of in our DNA. That's who we are. We've always served people. Whenever there was a need that arose in our community, we always made ourselves available. Because we follow the principles of Jesus, servant leadership. We don't ask people for anything. We ask, how can we help? And so that's kind of how I was shaped and how I was raised and it's just, it's in me, right? And so I really, my vision and my dream for our community is, is that we get back to that, that close-knit uh, community. I was having a conversation with, uh, my barber last week and we were talking about how the more we have prospered and the more we have stuff we've gotten, the more isolated we've become. And we were reminiscing about when we didn't have much, we were always together. He would talk about how he would, uh, go over his grandmother's house in the project and all of his family members and everybody would connect in the projects. And he said, we didn't know we were poor. If you wouldn't have told us we were poor, we would have never known because we always had something to eat. We were always taken care of and we were always together. He said, but as we have gotten more stuff, the more we've isolated ourselves and just been focused on us. And we need to get back to as a community, being community, being together, supporting one another, loving one another, encouraging one another. And I think if we can get back to that, a lot of the ills and the issues that we're dealing with will begin to dis- dissolve and dissipate because the connection that we have as humans is what's most important.
Yeah, it feels like isolation is a strategy for power to stay the way it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, um, I, it's also, you know, I think about the community and, and the growth since you were a kid to the Hispanic population in those areas now. How do you see that navigating, thinking about building this community and just building an inclusive precinct one?
Looking at the Hispanic community, I think that there's a lot that we can learn from the Hispanic community. Because they share some of those same traits and characteristics of community and family. And it's family over everything. And they use their collective strength and their collective efforts to actually grow and develop and build thriving and flourishing communities. We need to take a page out of that and we need to go back to that model because that's the model that works. That's the model that fur- that feeds us, that nourishes us and that brings out the best in all of us. So I think from a county perspective, if we can get back to that model, to where we look to each other to support and not look over one another and not devalue and minimize the gifts and the graces that we all have. We can be able to feed one another and build on that, right? Cause your success is dependent upon my success. Dr. King said it best. He said, we're all tied together in a garment of mutual destiny. I can't be great if you're not great and vice versa. And so it's that garment analogy that we're threaded and we're tied together. And if we work together and feed off of one another, we can do anything. But I think a lot of the, that our culture and society now really, how do I want to say it? Prioritizes or sensationalizes individual effort, individual ability. And the only one who benefits from individual development and ability is the individual. But the community suffers. But when we come together as a community and we lift one another up and we celebrate one another and not fight one another, because there's enough out here for all of us to eat and to be successful. And when we're providing those opportunities and creating spaces for everybody to be elevated, that's when true change happens. And that's what we've got to get back to.
So one thing that I think we have a little bit in common is that you do that whole community service thing and you grew up in that with your family and then all of your service up to this point for County Commissioner Roy Brooks. And so what people have asked me in the past is what made you decide to run for office? So you've supported folks that have run for office. You have worked for folks that have been in elected office. You know, folks approached me and suggested that I run for office before I ever even thought about doing it. So what prompted you to decide that that was the step you wanted to take?
I look at everything that I do from the lens of is this what God is leading me to do? I don't see service. I don't see the work that I do as a job. I see it as an assignment. I see it as a calling. It's a passion. So I never, I never thought about politics. That was not on my radar at all, no kind of way. Uh, all I wanted to do is just help people, right? Uh, when I actually was approached with the job that I have now, I didn't know anything about it. I was happy at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I was happy at doing mentoring, uh, being a mentor and providing mentors for children of color. That I was, I was in my space. I was in my happy place, working with kids and stuff like that and working with community. And a friend of mine sent me the job description and said, hey, I think you ought to apply for this because you're already doing that kind of stuff. This just gives you a bigger platform, right? And I was like, man, I ain't trying to do that. I don't know the first thing about politics. I'd be a bad politician. And so she was like, you need to, you need to try it. And so I looked at it and I saw Commissioner Brooks. I say, oh, I know Mr. Brooks. Our families kind of grew up in the same church together, right? At St. Andrews United Methodist Church on the south side. And I was like, okay, I'll, you know, I'll apply for it. So I did and I got the job. I was shocked that I actually got the job. I knew nothing about politics, but what I did know is how to serve people. And so as I've been serving people for the past 10 years in this capacity, Commissioner said, Rod, have you ever thought about running for office? I said, nah, man, I ain't trying to do that. I ain't trying to do none of that. Uh, he's like, you ought to think about it. And for the longest time, let me, let me put this out there. I'm a preacher. So if I sound preaching, it's just, I apologize.
That's good for podcasts. So you're good, you're good.
That's just kind of who I am. And so for the longest time, my father was a pastor and I served my father at Campus Drive United Methodist Church for about 20 years. And everybody would always tell me, oh, you're going to make a great pastor. You're going to be a good pastor. But God never told me I was going pastor, right? And so there was this inward struggle. Am I supposed to do that? Or am I going to do that just because everybody thinks that I should? So I went against, against the grain and I started working in the community. My heart was always bent towards that. I always got a sense of fulfillment doing that. But my struggle was, God, am I doing what you called me to do? And I really wrestled with that for a long time. My parents passed and I was by myself. And I'm still faced with that question. And I'm working for Commissioner Brooks and I asked myself, man, should I be back in the church or should I be doing this? And I remember praying one time and God just showed me, said, this is your pulpit. The community is. I need people who have my heart, who are willing to serve the community. And the joy that came in my heart like, I finally figured out what I'm supposed to be doing. So that's why I'm running for office, because this is what I believe God has called me to. This is my pulpit. God has called me to shepherd the community, to share his heart with his people, to advocate for his people, to stand up and fight for them and to show them that politicians can be trusted. That people can do things for the right reason, just because it's the right thing to do, not because they're trying to get anything out of it. I don't have anything that I want to get out of this. I just want to serve people and I want to serve people well. And so that's how I got to this place. And that's how I made that decision with fear and trembling, because I was like, my wife is not into the political thing. Oh, she does not like the spotlight. She likes to stay behind the scenes and support me and our beautiful daughters. And we have a wonderful relationship. We have amazing children. And she was like, don't be bringing all of that stuff into my house.
I, my husband would agree with her on that.
Yeah, I was like, Mr. Zeta sounds similar.
Yeah, he, he doesn't like all that stuff either. I think in my very first election, he walks some blocks. And then it's been hard to get him to do the other things. He's like, I support you in what you're trying to do. Because for very similar reasons, I think, you know, that's beautiful, the way you described your desire to serve. And we're not seeing that as much in folks that are making a decision to run for public office. And just yesterday I had some, some people talking about the fact that it's hard to get good people to run for office because it's so contentious and can be so negative. So I commend you for making that choice even while trembling, because I understand that. I absolutely.
You get it, you know, and I look to people like you and others who've done this before. This is my first time ever venturing into this, uh, realm and this arena. And it's scary, y'all. It really is. When, when your heart is, I just want to do good. I want to help people. And then you get hit with all of the stuff that comes with politics and you try to stay clean and you try to stay, uh, a man of character and integrity. It's a challenge. It really is. And the pull that it has on you. uh, a man of character and integrity. It's a challenge. It really is. And the pull that it has on you and your family. You have to really be committed to the work.
Yeah, and be solid in your family too, which it sounds like you have that.
I do. And you know, the crazy thing is, well, it's not crazy, but my wife, because she believes that this is what I'm supposed to be doing. She is all in. And my daughters are all in. We walk the neighborhoods together. And, you know, a lot of people don't answer the door, but we just stand there and we talk to the ring. Hi, I'm Roderick, I'm Cassandra, you know. My wife, it's amazing how my wife has just really jumped in and embraced this. She's a part of all of the things that we talk about. The decisions, the directions that we're going in. She is an active participant and I'm here for all of it.
I want to go back to uh, uh, your 10 years with Commissioner Roy Brooks. What is something you learned from him? Um, that maybe most people wouldn't see because they were not so close to the man. What, what was something that you just working with him? Man, you're like, you mean that's special. I want to kind of emulate that, you know, when I, when I run for office.
His heart for the community. It, it's interesting. I say, I say, sir, you have done so much. What is it that you're most proud of with your service? He said, I'm not proud of like the awards and all of that kind of stuff. That doesn't even matter to me. He said, my, the most proud, the thing that I'm most proud about is my children. And the wonderful humans that my children are. The thing that I've learned from Commissioner Brooks is how to remain a statesman in the midst of difficulty, how to keep your calm, how to bring the peace and how to appeal to the human conscious. That's what Roy excels at, is a human and appealing to our greater self as humans. Not as men, not as women, not as Democrats, not as Republicans, but just humans. And how to be able to bring that to the forefront and to capture the conscious of the members of the court. You have to remember, he served on the court for a long time when it was just him. He was outnumbered, but he was able to get things done because he would always focus on the human condition. And the things that unite us and that we all are concerned about, like healthcare, like transportation, like social services. Those are things that we all need to benefit from because there will come a time in our life uh, that we may be in a difficult place and we need to have somebody or something, a system in place that can support us and that can help us. But to answer your question directly, his ability to highlight and lift up the human condition and build consensus amongst all of his colleagues.
You brought up issues and I know some of the issues you have on your, your site. You had four there. What issue do you feel we can, uh, is our biggest opportunity to really improve residents' lives?
I think healthcare, making sure that we expand uh, JPS Hospital.
And there seems concerns there across.
There are concerns.
County. And why is that? Talk, talk more where, where.
I think that some of the members of the court are in the bubble and enjoy the benefit of a good life, that they're disconnected from the condition of the people that are around them, that are not in their direct line of sight, a sphere of influence. And because they're disconnected from it and they don't feel the effects of the struggles that other people are having, it's easy to say, oh, well, we don't really need that, you know, they can get insurance. So they can do this and they can do that. It's using the middle class or upper class mindset to be able to inform how people who are poor should operate and move. I remember once I did a, a training on a, um, it was called the um Bridges Out of Poverty by Ruby Payne. I don't know if you've heard of her. She is amazing. And she broke down the classism, class system. And she was like, she gave the example of when Hurricane Katrina hit and those individuals were displaced and came to Fort Worth and they were in uh, Wilkerson Grines, right? They had them, you know, housed there. And there was a really well-intentioned church that came and wanted to support. They really had a heart to support those individuals who had been impacted by the hurricane. And so what did they do? They came and they gave the individuals gift cards of like $2,000. Here, we want to help. Because from their lens and their perspective, giving you money was the answer. But they never took the time to ask the people, what would be beneficial to you? What will help you? And when they came back a couple of weeks later, people had bought TVs, they had bought gaming systems and all of that kind of stuff. They didn't recognize that the individuals that they gave this credit card to had never seen more than $500 at one time. And to get a gift card of $2,000, they had hit the lottery. And people who are in poverty, they are so conditioned to living in poverty that they want to be able to escape. And entertainment is a way to escape. So they bought and did the things that they thought that they would never be able to do again. And the people, the church people who gave them got upset and were like, why would you do that? You should have went and gone to a place to live and this and that, da, 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 da. But the problem was you never asked me what could help me. What did I need? You assume that you knew what I needed from your middle-class lens. And so a lot of the individuals who we deal with in the political sphere, they're approaching problems from their perspective, but they never get down low and ask the people who are actually living in it, how can I help you? What will be most beneficial to you? And so I see that problem happening with JPS Hospital, right? The people who are making decisions don't use JPS Hospital. And we're making decisions for the individuals who use it and who need it. And so it's easy to dismiss and say, ah, they can get insurance. Well, can they really? Ah, they can afford prescriptions. Can they really? Do you know? You've never gone without affordable, or you've never gone without insurance. You've always had insurance your entire life. You don't know what it's like to not have insurance. So how can you make decisions for individ- for individuals who you have no connection with?
Yeah, you mentioned that a, a program you went through to kind of see through that lens. And Catholic Charities and um, Tarrant County Homeless Coalition is doing a poverty simulation, which I've done previously and they're about, they're, they've launched a new one. And it is ama- I mean, everyone should do it. It's a way to not be in that bubble.
Right.
Because they put you in a role of someone who is, has, you know, a number of strikes against them. And they give you a few resources and they have resources around the room and you have to manage trying to not have things get worse. And it was so, I mean, I, I am in a bubble that I, where I have not had these struggles on the regular. And so I was flabbergasted at how absolutely challenging it was. And so it's, it's really important to see it from that lens.
You, you, you're in my sweet spot because here's the thing. We need to celebrate the individuals who are in those situations because it takes great resilience and innovation to be able to make ends meet, as we say in the hood. It does. And the average person can't do that. They will, they freak out and they'd be like, oh my God, I've never, what do I do? They get overwhelmed. Now you get to walk a day in the lives or in the shoes of those individuals who make it happen every day. With, with this cycle of chaos going on. And my goal is, let's help break the cycle of chaos and create a space where people can just pause and breathe.
And, 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 you know, when, I like the term cycle of cha- chaos and that actually kind of feels a little bit what's happening in the county right now, a little bit. You know, I'm just going to list a couple of issues that's just been in the paper, right? You know, the, we, we're moving the pre-numbered ballots. Uh, Commissioner Ramirez, uh, Ramirez just attempted to pass a, a political consulting contract uh, with Randy Meadows. You had uh, uh, pandemic dollars for affordable childcare sending to police enforcement. Uh, the attempt to overhaul Tarrant County Courts, death in Tarrant County jails, uh, the exiting of county leaders. Um, how do you, how do you look, you know, winning this position? When you do that, how do you look at how to deal with what's, feels like a cycle of chaos right now, uh, uh, in that space?
So I'll, I'll use the phrase that's been used often, especially in the nonprofit sector. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. How do you tackle these overwhelming chaotic issues? One at a time, one step at a time, one piece at a time. We're not going to fix or, or change what we've experienced over years and decades in a matter of days, weeks or months. It's going to take time. And you got to communicate that with the people and be honest. It's going to take time. But the commitment is that I'm gonna show up every day and I'm gonna tackle that first thing and we're gonna work through that. And we're going to involve you in the process. And we're just gonna move one step at a time, one day at a time, together.
We had Bud Kennedy on. I'm interested to hear your take here on this. He, 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 we had him on and he was pretty. If, if you haven't listened to Bud's, he was, it was really good. 52-year Texas reporter. And he said, county gov- this was his quote. He said, county government was never meant to be really good. It was never intended to be any good. When the constitution was written in 1876, it was after reconstruction. The county government is inher- inherently inefficient. You know, you're spent 10 years there and you're sacrificing a lot to make it better today. So what's kind of your perspective on what can county look like, uh, politics, uh, where more citizens are aware that it's there? More citizens are wanting to uh, participate in, in elections and be aware of what's happening in the county. Cause today, if their, their dog's barking, they're calling their, their congressman or they're calling their, their local council. It kind of, there's a gap between county impact uh, and connection uh, to their constituents. So what's kind of your take on the image of county politics in Texas?
My image of county politics in Texas is where everybody's voice is heard, where everybody's brought to the table. Where we bring the services or we bring what the county does to the people and not expect the people to come to us. One of my hot buttons is, we say that we have all of these services and resources available for the residents, for the members of the community, but we put all of these obstacles and barriers in place to where they can't access them. We need to be able to streamline our processes, cut through the red tape and make it as simple as possible for people to be able to get the help that we say we have set aside for you. If that means uh, simplifying applications from three to four pages to one page and we put it in language that people understand and can relate to. If it means what we do in our office, when people call, we don't give them a number to call somebody. We call for them. We call with them and we follow up with them. And we call before to the person that they need and say, hey, I'm sending this person to you. This is their issue. This is their need. We need to be, we need to do A, B, and C. And then we say, let's call, we, we bring them to the office or if they're not at the office, we give them the number, say, call, and we call with them. And then once we hand them off, we then follow back up with them. Did you talk to such and such? Were you able to reach them? Did you get what you needed? And then we follow up with the department within the county and say, how did the conversation go with this individual? What's the resolution? What do we come up with? What do we need to do from our office to ensure that this constituent gets what they need? We got to bring the government to the people. It belongs to the people. It doesn't belong to those who are elected. It belongs to the people who put them there to represent them. So that's my vision of county government, bringing it back to who it belongs to, the people.
I, I think another issue or challenge with Tarrant County specifically is just how big it is. And uh, uh, another thing kind of Bud said in his interview was like, man, Dallas, they created Collin County, which then now we're, Tarrant County is kind of Collin County, Dallas County together. So you have that politics, that income separation. Um, so what's your take on like navigating the complexities of how large our county is? And what maybe have you seen, you know, just different types of communities and, and, and different spaces that, you know, a kid from South Fort Worth may have not known because they don't spend 21 miles north in, you know, some residents.
Right.
You know, uh, north of them.
I think that each, each neighborhood or each community has their own culture and has their own vibe and feel to it. And some of them are unfamiliar to me because it's not my experience. But I try to go in and approach it with an open mind so that I can begin to understand. I can begin to, to uh, absorb the culture and the community and what's important to them and what's a priority for them. And I think if we approach it from that perspective, we can shrink the bigness of it and make it real small. When we begin to explore and expand our perspective and our view on different communities. You got to go and be with the people. You got to sit amongst the people and you got to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. I have learned this. I've learned that in spades, going through this process, becoming comfortable with being uncomfortable. And so you got to come to the people and you got to spend time with them. You got to understand, I got to spend time on the northeast corridor of the county, understand what's a priority for them and what's important to them. Because poverty has different faces, right? It looks different in different communities. It can be real nice and pretty in South Lake and Colville and Grapevine. They look, they're wonderful and they're beautiful, but they still have issues. And we need to meet with the people and understand what those issues are and see the areas where we identify and connect with each other on a human level. And those individuals need to come over to the south side, the southeast side, the southwest side and to learn the culture and the vibe of that community. And once we see the commonality that we have, even though we live in proximity in different places, but there is a common thread that runs through all of us. We can then shrink the county and bring about that continuity in that community that we talked about at the beginning. That makes the county not so big when you understand that there's a lot of stuff that we have in common that we're dealing with and going through together. And I'll uh, I'll share this one thing. One of the programs that we have started in our office is called Faces of Changemakers. It's a trauma and resiliency program. Trauma is not gender-specific. Trauma is not socioeconomic. Specific trauma impacts and affects everybody. And when we understand trauma and the commonality we have and the response that we have to trauma, then that shrinks it, right? And it helps us to relate and connect with one another. And what we're doing with Faces of Changemakers is we're number one, teaching people how to identify trauma. A lot of people are dealing with trauma and don't realize that's what it is. They think that this is just the way life is, right? And trauma doesn't always have to be something that we would think uh, from a sensationalized perspective that is dramatic, like somebody got shot in front of me. Trauma can be, we had to move. My parents got divorced. Or my grandparent died. Those are traumatic experiences. And we all share those. But we need to begin to talk about it. We need to normalize it. We need to identify it. Teach people how to articulate it, get it out of them and create spaces where you can do that. And then give them the tools and the skills that they need to respond when traumatic experiences happen because trauma is not going anywhere. Because you live in a world with people, right? But if I teach you how to respond and how to react to it in a way that's proactive and not destructive, then that makes our community better.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Roderick, thanks for uh, you know, being on the eight one seven podcast, you know, and, and our kind of last question here is really, you know, there's only a couple of weeks until the election and we've been promoting that election and the May 4th election. There's two that, you know, happening in May. And uh, I know the, the first one was really close and, 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 and we, you know, this is after Memorial Day. So we have a lot of work to do. What do you want the listeners of the eight one seven pod to know? Um, any kind of strategy or things you're doing in the last uh, couple of weeks as we get to the election?
First, I want to thank you, EJ and Ann for allowing me to invade your space and spending this time with you. I have thoroughly enjoyed myself and I'm grateful for both of you and the work that you're doing and giving voice to a population, a segment of our population who doesn't really have one, or doesn't feel like they have one. Thank you for being that voice for them. May 28th is the day, runoff election. What do I want to encourage? My friends and my neighbors, vote for Roderick Miles, number one. Uh, I want you to consider my heart. I want you to consider my track record. I want you to consider my demonstrated ability, the work that I've done in county government. And I want you to know that I don't just want a title. I want the job. I want to continue to show up for each and every one of you. I want to continue to advocate for you. I want to continue to support you. I want to continue the great work that we've done. I want to build upon a great legacy and a strong foundation. And I want to create a community that we all can be proud of, that we all can say, I love being from Fort Worth. I love being from this place. I love being. I want to create that community. I want us to be together. I want us to elevate the. I want us to elevate the human condition and see that there is more that brings us together than there are that divides us. So I'm asking you to support me to get out, ask a friend, have you voted? Do you know that the runoff election is coming up? Do you know who's on the ballot? I'm asking the people that I know and that I love, vote for Roderick Miles and then go get 20 people. And make sure that those 20 people show up to the polls and vote for Roderick Miles and extend yourself. How can I help you get to the poll? How can I tell you, how can I answer any questions that you may have as to why this is important? And why local elections matter? I want the voters to be engaged. I want you to know that this is your election, this is your county. And you need to have an active, an active role in it and be an active participant. Again, vote Roderick Miles, Tarrant County Commissioner, Precinct One. Thank you so much.
So that was our big interview with Roderick Miles, candidate for place one, Tarrant County Commissioner, which is my commissioner. So I'm glad that we had the opportunity to have him on to share with us. Our paths have crossed multiple times in years of service with his current role as the administrator for Charles, Roy Charles Brooks. But it was inspirational and as he said, he's a preacher. And many of the things he talked about seemed to tie in with placemaking and community building. And all of that stuff is so close to my heart. So I really enjoyed that interview today.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was really impressed because of the, you know, when you usually hear someone who, who worked in the county for 10 years and as the, you know, the, the Robin to the Batman, you often think, man, it's their brain and their knowledge that they have on the county that's makes them effective. And maybe they weren't going to have that exuberant leader, you know, that, that you usually see from, you know, the, the Commissioner Brooks. But I mean, he, he must watch them and had family as pastors and you can just see he, he can take that leadership role of inspiring and influencing people. And I, and I thought that was cool to just to be able to be in the room with him and watch him do that with us.
Yeah, and we had some questions written down and some of it he touched on before we even got to the questions. Um, answering, you know, what he's learned from the role that he's been in, um, being supportive of Roy in his job after all these years. So we're glad to continue to bring these interviews to folks so that they can make informed decisions when they go to the polls and encourage folks to make sure that they participate in these upcoming elections.
And, and to hear the other candidate, it was Kathleen Hicks and that one would have been nearly a month ago. So, so go ahead and look at that one that we, that we did as well. So I like to listen to both, you know, when, when, when we have candidates like that. We did that with you in the mayoral race, having all, all of you guys. So, all right, Ann, so let's go ahead and move into our wins and losses. We always start with our losses so that we can end on a win. What do you got?
So I don't, I hate to jump on the bandwagon of being sad and upset about things that close. But there was an announcement of a business closing that did make me sad. So I did want to acknowledge that Funky Picnic over in the South Main Village announced that they were closing. They had announced previously that they were struggling a bit and there was a big rally and they acknowledged that a lot of people came out to try to support them. But unfortunately they have come to the end of their business and so they're planning to close, I think the end of this month. A lot of folks have been jumping over there to try to have a last minute visit.
Yeah, little clock north, mm, that's delicious.
Yeah, it was, it's a yummy place and I was there recently for an event for Yogi Squad, which is another organization that supports mindfulness and yoga with young people in the community. They had their fundraiser there and they're fundraising for, I'm getting off topic, but they're fundraising for a bus that is going to be taking that mindfulness. And so they were a great community partner is basically what I'm trying to say. They weren't just a restaurant, I think they, and a, or a brew pub. They supported the community greatly and I, I know that the folks that run Funky Picnic will go on to do other things in the community, but that's definitely a loss and hopefully something else cool will go in there at some point.
Yep, right there was also Black Cat's Pizza, which left, you know, Turkish Flying Carpet in Magnolia is left. But I saw that they actually moved out to Irving area. So that's the second downtown south side restaurant that still opens, but now actually lives in a more robust economically viable dense place where people actually live. Flying Carpet in Irving, Four Sisters in Mansfield. And so we continue to have majority of our people living out of the loop. And so we continue to have losses in places we love and care. My loss is the Fort Worth Cowtown Coliseum is home for an American First Policy MAGA rodeo. April 17th, featuring Vivek Ramaswamy, Kellyanne, Lee Zeldin and all the big namers. It is a, it is a event. It has cowboys with cowboy hats and all these people. And it is a loss because everyone in Fort Worth is not listening about the cowboy culture stuff. You think I'm joking, but it's, it's hard to sell republicanism. It's easy to sell that cowboys are cool. And so I'm not saying this is true across the world or across the country. But I believe our city, subconsciously if they know it, are using cowboy culture to push Republican propaganda. Which is why I will never wear a cowboy hat, which is why I, when I work as a city commissioner, I do not wear my little longhorn pin because I will not support or wear any cowboy boots, go to any rodeo. Because this to me is the belly of the beast. Not too long ago, I was talking about Kid Rock. So this is not, this is not just, it's happening right in front of us. And you know what? I'm a little annoyed by Beyonce because she made it hard for me to fight for this right now. So, but anyways, that is my loss. All right, Ann, what is your win?
So my win is something that happened a little while ago. There was an opening of a new gallery that is focused on black and brown artists in Fort Worth with minimal commercialization. And this gallery is called Tubman and it is located in the Hanley District. They had their grand opening the other, last weekend. I missed a lot of things in the last week because my child was in town and I wanted to spend every minute that I possibly could with him and his friends. And so that was fabulous, but the Tubman Gallery is a partnership with Community Frontline and it's got its inaugural exhibit open now and it's titled, I ain't never belonged to just one person. The gallery is in Hanley Neighborhood, which is, was once a booming railroad hub. And it gets its name from abolitionist Harriet Tubman. So I'm looking forward to going and seeing the first exhibit that's there and being supportive of this type of a gallery being in our city. And that is my win for the week.
I love it. My win as well is around just North Texans really understanding what's important to them. What you see by Republican politicians mainly is that they believe that the top issue is immigration. Immigration and border security are top issues that many candidates tout. But when you look what residents care about most, this issue often is not front of mind. Dozens of residents were interviewed by Star Telegram, pointed to politics and concerns related to the economy, taxes, healthcare, education, affordable housing, when really talking about their concerns. Immigration came up, but most people were not focused there. And I actually think my win is immigration. The reason why it's the win is because when you look at the data, without immigration, we would not be having any kind of working boom and job growth. With US working age population would shrink. Data shows that all of the growth change since February 2020 has come from immigrants filling jobs that we no longer do or even have the people to do. When we do not have US born people and our ages, that population is shrinking. As someone who travels across the country to have the privilege to stay in hotels and to get Ubers and to see the people who are pitting into sweat equity for their own life because they're trying to make something for themselves. Immigrants are more likely to be millionaires in America. We are an operating system that is democratized for anyone, no matter what you look like, where you come from. And our country, which is only 5% of the world's population, will always need to welcome people to believe in the operating system that we provide to create a better life for yourself. And so my win is immigrants who are doing that every single day in Fort Worth, Tarrant County, Texas and the country. And we know that this is the real power and what we should be talking about when we talk about immigration in America. Well, hopefully you enjoyed this podcast today and hopefully you enjoyed the interview with Roderick Miles. We will be back next week with possibly another guest. Like we said, we don't like to give you all the juices, but I guarantee, I think this is going to be an exciting one. I've been looking forward to sit down with this person. So if this person shows up for the pod, we will be having another exciting podcast. Thank you so much for listening.